Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilmember Chris Ray and I'm going to call to order the January 14th, 2025, City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. This evening with me is Councilmember Zach Hall and Deputy Council President Barbara D. Michelle. Before we get going, there will be multiple public comment opportunities at today's meeting. There will be a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation in council question and answer period. Members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who have signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. City Clerk, is there anyone joining us virtually? And has anybody signed up in the room to speak?
Jay Ray, no one has signed up prior to the start of the meeting and we have no virtual attendees.
All right. If anybody would like to make comment at this time, we happy to take public comment and I will pause again after each of the agenda items. I see no one moving in that direction. So with that, we will get to our agenda. We have two agenda items today. The Mobility Implementation Plan update and the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project. But before we get to that, we have the minutes from our October 8th, 2024 meeting. Any objections to approving the minutes as presented? All right, without objection, the minutes are approved. All right, let's move into our first agenda item though then. It's Comp 0082 Mobility Implementation Plan, presented by Thomas Valdrez, Senior Transportation Planner. Thomas, welcome back.
Thank you very much for having me. It's great to see you both two nights in a row and it's great to see some familiar faces in the room. Chairman, it's great to hear. And again, yeah, my name is Thomas Valdrez, Senior Transportation Planner, here to speak on the Mobility Master Plan update. And I have a couple of questions for this committee to consider. First, do you agree with the proposed change in title to the name of this document based on recommendations from the Equity Board as well as the internal staff equity team? Second question, do you agree with the new and revised actions based on recommendations from the transit study and board feedback? And third, if there's any other changes you'd like to see, I would love to know that. So the council approved the transportation element as part of the comprehensive plan December 2nd. And most of these changes with respect to the goals and policies were directly related to the transit study, if you recall, that we did between 2022 and 24. And so this Mobility Master Plan, we can think of that as the implementation arm that implements the transportation element. And so today we're talking about the actions that will implement those goals and policies that were approved in the transportation element. So just to summarize the changes here, we are recommending renaming the title of this document to, from the Mobility Master Plan to the Mobility Implementation Plan. Essentially, citywide, we're trying to use more inclusive language, so removing the word master and changing it with implementation is one of those ways that we're hoping to sort of change our documentation. Secondly, there's some housekeeping updates as well as revisions to baseline existing and future conditions. The document was last updated five years ago, so we've just sort of brought it up to speed for where we are today. We also have updated references based on what was approved in December with the transportation element, and there's revised actions to support that. In addition to the transportation sort of themes within the Mobility Master Plan, we're also hoping to revise actions to support other city priorities such as sustainability and equity and so on. So just very briefly, we took this document to the advisory boards, took it to the Transportation Advisory Board. They had a couple of great suggestions that we've incorporated. The first one was talking about the need to support parks and trails via public transit. So we can think of this as the Trailhead Direct Program, which seasonally brings folks from out of the area to hike out our great trails. The second one was related to ensuring that bike facilities and pedestrian facilities that are shared are safe. So thinking about the speed differential between a bike and a pedestrian and making sure that we're thinking about, you know, how those interactions might occur. There's also been some minor updates that were recommended, so we've incorporated those as well. Took this to the Equity Board not too long ago. They were really supportive of it. They did have a recommendation, which we've carried through. They'd love to see us considering equity metrics and criteria within the transportation, the TIP. So that's something that we currently do, but we want to really dig in to make sure that we're hitting our equity goals with that. So those are the feedback that's been incorporated. And if you will allow me, I'll just walk through all of the updates we're proposing. I'll defer to the chair. If you want me to pause at each slide, I can do that, or we can just go all the way through.
Any preference? I think maybe we can just kind of roll through them. Yeah, I'd say just keep rolling.
Great, sounds good. So again, the first one is with the title. We are hoping to change the name to reduce unintentional harm and promote inclusive language use. The first two updates in terms of actions are related to proactive safety. These are just aligning our safety goals with some actions. So we're proposing monitoring collisions that occur with respect to cars and pedestrians and bikes, as well as reviewing our speed limit setting policies. Within the goal section two, climate and quality of life, these are related to the commute trip reduction program. This is a state requirement that we have this program. It's applicable to employers with over 100 employees. And we're really just formalizing things that we already currently do. New actions that we have, so I'll just batch the first seven. These are relating to climate resilience and emergency management, two really important topics that coincide with transportation. So we're really trying to promote implementation measures in this regard. The next one is related to the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. Again, this is a federal requirement. We update our documentation regularly. So again, this is formalizing something that is required and we already do. Trails access via public transit, I just spoke to that. That's the one that Transportation Advisory Board recommended and we think it's a good So the next couple here are related to multimodal balance system. The first one was active transportation performance metrics. The Public Works staff will be taking a discussion about transportation concurrency. So this is related to that, ensuring that our bicycles and pedestrians have level of service standards that are matched to concurrency. So you'll hear more about this in Q2 of this year, I believe. Street standard updates, we're formalizing the idea of doing regular updates to our street standards. We did update our street standards not too long ago. However, before that, it was many years before they were updated, so we want to sort of built in a regular schedule of updating that document. Next three are related to micro mobility, so the bike scooters, like bike share, scooter share, e-bike library. These are all topics that the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee commented on, I believe it was October or like potentially before. So a lot of good ideas as we were talking about the transit study that we're sort of building into this actions list. The last two are related to the Light Rail Planning Guide, which we talked about yesterday during the community of the whole. So this is just really working towards implementing that document. Next, we have the walking goal. So this first goal is really just talking about the need to identify gaps in the pedestrian network, such as gaps in the sidewalk network. So just formalizing that goal area and the need to address that. With cycling, again, addressing known gaps or unknown gaps in the bike network, addressing safety concerns, as well as designing for new facilities based around best engineering standards with respect to safety. Goal six is transit, and this is really about coordinating with our transit service providers. And the next part, just continuation about transit, then these next six relate to ways that we can support transit operations, acknowledging that transit service is not provided by the city, but there's things we can do to support transit operations. Goal seven is related to auto travel. As we think about places such as Central Issaquah growing, there's going to be a lot of competing needs for the sidewalk. So we're going to need to think about this in the future as growth occurs, ensuring that our curb space, which has only a finite amount of space, and there's going to be many competing needs for that curb space, such as loading zones. If we have micro mobility, for example, that could be, there could be areas that that might be needed. And just any other, you know, type of need on the curb, we're going to need to start thinking about that as that becomes more and more of a concern in ways to sort of optimize our limited resources for that. So these next batch are really about improving understanding throughout the document. I won't talk about those too much.
I thought it would be a good breakpoint. Any questions or comments or questions at this point? Nope? Okay, not a good breakpoint.
Great. So this next batch is again about improving flow and understanding of the document. We found many instances where it would be just better to rewrite it just a little bit, just very minor updates. This next batch is about improving understanding and implementation throughout the document. And then this next batch is about supporting actionability and implementation. We also found a lot of areas that we can remove redundancies and we also completed a lot of work since it was last updated. So this slide represents those actions as well as these. So I'll push it back to the chair. I appreciate your feedback and I'm excited to hear what you have to say.
That was, that was great. There's a lot of stuff in there. Any questions on what we just went through? Councilmember or Deputy Council President?
So changing the name, I am all for it, but I don't want to make assumptions about why that was suggested. So can you just go and explain a little bit about why the word master is offensive so that I can tell people accurately what that's about? I'm making an assumption that I know what it's about, but I'm not really sure.
I will do my best to answer this. We have full documentation that I can share with this group, but it was revealed there's an internal working group within staff. The word master has historic connotations with slavery, for example. And we just want to like remove any sort of language that really doesn't do anything for us. There's other words we could use that serve the purpose and we don't want to create situations where people would potentially feel unwelcome to participate. So that's generally what the flavor is and we have full documentation I can share after this.
That's fine. That was my assumption as well. So I just, I wanted clarity on that and yes, I think that's a good idea. Thank you for the additional explanation.
Member Hall?
Thank you very much. I have three. So, so for the Equity Board's feedback on equity criteria, so like you alluded to, we do have equity as an evaluation criteria in our CIP process. So is the idea, just to clarify, is the idea to just revisit that and make sure it's working as it should, or was there anything specific that they?
Yeah, so this would be in regards to the Transportation Improvement Program. And yeah, we do have equity criteria. There's a scoring matrix with it. When I approached the Equity Board with this topic as part of my discussions with the Mobility Master Plan, they really wanted to dig in and make sure that the data that we're using, the demographic data, as well as other sorts of data that are out there, they want to make sure that the data and the processes are getting us to where we want to go. So essentially more transparency on what we're doing and just they want to ensure that this is the right approach for what we're doing. So hoping to bring this topic to them in, I believe, October. We have a joint meeting with the Transportation Advisory Board and the Equity Board, so we'll dig into this a little bit deeper with that.
That sounds like a great exercise, definitely good use of time. Did you say October?
October, that's when we're slated to have that joint meeting.
What's the, I guess that brings up another question, because I would assume, I would have assumed that by then we would see, because it's a CIP year, isn't it? Right? So I guess by that time I would have assumed everything would have been scored by then. Is that right? Or is it shifted down a little bit?
It will likely be scored by then. I think these are iterative processes. So, you know, I think we have been looking at equity as part of the CIP evaluation process for a couple of years now and we continue to try to refine that. And so these discussions will just be that continued refinement. It will likely not impact this cycle, but again, builds on pieces from there.
Okay, yeah, no, good answer. My next, is it okay if I keep going? My next question was about the policies around Vision Zero. Correct me if I'm wrong, and I think it was when you were with us too. I thought we had talked about Vision Zero and we wanted to like avoid using the words Vision Zero and just kind of have policies that were similar around pedestrian safety programs or something like that, but wanting, wanting to avoid the connotation of Vision Zero. Am I remembering that wrong or?
No, you're correct, yeah. Vision Zero has some, some connotations and things are kind of shaking out across the state and like really across the country. So I think we're leaning towards safety systems approach as sort of the general name. We did leave the term Vision Zero within the document. We just did not touch that. We're not really anticipating touching that in this next couple of years, but we're looking to revisit that policy discussions and like the work associated with that in the next budget panel.
Safe Systems, what was it?
SSA, Safe Systems Approach.
Safe Systems. Okay, I like that. My last one was about some of the redundancies, the ones in particular that were redundant with the ICAP. Just to clarify, so we're seeing it as redundant based on, I think there were like two of them, redundant based on policies or goals that are in the Climate Action Plan. And so we're removing it from mobility? Is that right?
Correct, yeah. There were, you know, in this last round of updates to the transportation element, all of the greenhouse gas emissions type policies were in the transportation element. However, with the previous update of the comp plan, we removed all those and put them into the environmental like sustainability section. So the associated actions didn't have a like place to point to and those actions were actually moved into the next update of the ICAP is where you will see those.
Okay, well, yeah, definitely there was a lot of reshuffling within the different elements of the comp plan. So you're seeing, I guess one of my questions was going to be, why don't we just leave it in both? But you're saying, I think you might have just answered that, which is saying, we want all of our policies and actions to come from or come from guidance that lives in that element of the comp plan. Is that what you're?
Yeah, that's correct. And frankly, because of the restructure of the document, we wouldn't have a place to put it, like there'd be no policy or goal to like sort of align that with. ICAP is a great spot for it and we, departments work together, so it's not like it, we don't, we don't see it. We're all working together, it's just more of a formality for a structured document.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think I have any more questions, so let's pause and see if there's anyone in, anybody online?
No, there is not, Chair.
Anybody in the audience interested in making comments at this time? No? All right, we'll move on. Who'd like to get us started? Deputy Council President?
Thank you. So thank you so much for this really complete and thorough report. So just a few comments. As always, the matrix that you provide of changes is always so useful to me, so thank you so much. I can only imagine the work that goes into that, but it does make it so easy to track what's new in, in the report. I was really pleased with the emphasis on equity and I could see that that was driving a lot of the new things and I'm really pleased with that and the fact that the Equity Board had a consequential impact. I'm really pleased with the proposed annual fatality and severe injury report. To me, that's going to help the council get their arms around that issue a lot more and help us make future budget, you know, commitments based on the data. So, and the map was very, very interesting to me. So, and I agree with the name change, so I don't have anything to add or change because this was just so thoroughly well done is all I can say. So no suggestions for changes or any, any additions at all. So thank you for all your hard work and everybody else's hard work on this report.
Councilmember Hall, your thoughts?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I went through the red lines, copy over the weekend, appreciated the alignment from other work from the past year, like the transit study and all the crazy amount of work that we did on comp plan and the transportation element over the last couple of years. Appreciated the touch with TAB and the Equity Board. I was able to go back and watch the TAB meeting too, so thanks also for staff support and a whole host of different things and consultant support. They had kind of those targeted changes that they requested that I think were good, like reevaluating the equity criteria, which I, and also I think city administration, that's a good point, that equity will always be kind of an iterative criteria that we're always looking at and always wanting to improve. I liked TAB's feedback too around the new policy for ensuring shared facilities between bikes and pedestrians, safety there. That was actually something that came up when we were talking about Northwest Semamish Road and council decided on having that shared use path for bikes and pedestrians and we were worried, not as worried as, as the interaction between cars and bikes, but knowing that also bikes are going much faster than the average walker. So I'm glad that that's captured there. I like that we captured all of this in the plan update page. There's literally a page of kind of this whole process that you essentially outlined, the feedback we got from boards and different changes that were made because of the transit plan and stuff like that. So I think that'll be good to look back on in the future as well. Few things that were completed, which is always great to see, I liked that. Otherwise, lots of just kind of relocated items and housekeeping going on here. There are a couple of things that just come to mind. First, I don't have any concerns around removing the policies, the ICAP policies. I was kind of coming in here thinking, let's just keep them in, but I think you've made a compelling point that we should be able to draw an arrow right from the element of the comp plan to its functional plan. For the Vision Zero thing, I just feel like, let's change it to Safe Systems Approach, if we think that's the better language and it captures everything that was captured in Vision Zero without kind of the negative connotations associated with it, which is, I think, pretty much just not always being successful, those programs, right? Unless there's, unless staff feels like there's a really compelling reason, in which case I would trust that, I just feel like, let's update the language. What was it? Safe Systems Approach. And then the other thing that's on my mind, and I don't know if this is, oh, actually, let me do these questions first. I'm fine with the proposed change to the title. I think that was great feedback that we got. It reminds me too of, I mean, it really should be like implementation or action. It's like the Climate Action Plan, right? And we can't have every plan be called the strategic plan, this strategic plan, this strategic, and there's no strategy. So, so I like that. I guess, good with the new and revised changes, I already went over that. And then in terms of kind of what else to see, this might not, this might not actually be helpful feedback. This, I just kind of have like loose structure, something I was thinking up in the shower earlier and, you know, how just good ideas come to you. I was noticing just even with the next item that we have on our agenda, how challenging it is to implement some of these policies when we have kind of policy goal in one hand, like bike lanes, wanting to have bike lanes and have everything be, what's the, what's the term? LTS three, like the kind of effort of biking in a particular area, come into conflict with other policy goals that we have in other plans, like tree retention? I mean, this is the issue that we're talking about later, right? So, and it's come up with Squawk, Squawk Mountain for the street standards issue also, which will be coming back to us later. The retaining wall, Black Nugget retaining wall, we had that issue come into the committee as well, and then now there's this. So I just wonder if it might be prudent to document this somehow, that this challenge or conflict exists sometimes between policy goals? I guess the way I'm thinking about it is, let's say we're the council, just the three of us, we made the final decision on, on whether to put in bike facilities or not bike facilities, and sorry, I'm kind of mixing items at the moment. Another council in the future within the same like decision-making context could make a completely different decision, because we have two policies that exist on their own but are kind of in conflict with each other and kind of goes against the purpose of having a policy document, right? You want to have some sort of consistency of policy and outcome because you have this document in place for policymakers. So I don't know if this is really any useful commentary or anything like that. Maybe it's just, just the reality that we're elected to these positions and sometimes councils in the future and past think differently about things or might cling to one policy over another or considerations like cost and, which are really important, of course. So I just kind of want to throw that out there if we wanted to talk about having some sort of acknowledgement of that in Mobility Implementation Plan, maybe even just in the plan update page, just about, hey, this is something we've noticed that it's kind of challenging and so we acknowledge that this is our aspiration, these policies, but we're not always able to hit the mark because of considerations that come into play, because we have to balance it with other policy goals that we have. I don't know, let's just, just throw that out there and see if anyone picks up. Otherwise, I thought it was good.
Great, thanks. I want to comment on your, your policy question, because I think it's a really interesting one. I think that's, that is the ultimate human dilemma, is we, we have these overlapping desires and sometimes they are in conflict. And I do believe it is the role of this council and future councils to resolve those conflicts because that's where we get into some sort of a value proposition at that time and the weights change and people see things through. I think that's just, you set your objectives where you want to go and then the reality gets in the way and then you have to figure out how to sort that out. That's my, my kind of take on that. But I thought it was a really interesting topic because we see it all the time. So I wanted to take that one first. A couple of thoughts on the name change, completely down with the motivation for the change, but I, and Councilmember Hall actually thought was going to steal my thunder, what if we called it the Mobility Action Plan and though it, that way it has a parallel structure to climate action and it has a catchy acronym of MAP, which with mobility kind of actually doesn't sound like a bad name. So you, if you bring it back as MIP, I'm not going to be unhappy, but I just want you to chew on MAP. Anyway, a couple of things I just wanted to comment on, emergency evacuation routes and evacuation time estimate studies. Interestingly enough, like two nights ago, my wife and I were talking and this is exactly the topic she brought up as something we need to do given recent events in Los Angeles and then all two recent events in Paradise, California and Lahaina, Hawaii and all of those places that really understanding how people get out of some of our neighborhoods, which are very constricted. You know, I live in Tallis, Tallis is, looks just like Paradise, California. So doing that and then the time studies and then also sort of the action plan about who does what would also be very helpful. So glad to see that and they're super excited about that. And then the other comment I have really deals with, yeah, because you used the correct word, micro mobility. And I only have one issue with micro mobility and that's tidiness. You know, I don't know how we deal with that. I mean, I think the concept is solid. I just hate seeing scooters laying on their side kind of all over the place. So as we're kind of wrestling through how we do that, I know it sounds... So as we're kind of wrestling through how we do that, I know it sounds very something, very suburban, but how do, how do we make sure that if we embrace this technology, which fills an important niche, that we do in such a way that it does become a public news story? So other than that, I thought it was great. I like where we're going. I'm supportive of this. Nothing I would add to it. I guess my question is, you're looking for council action sometime in the near future, right?
Chair, that's correct, yeah.
Do we think that this could go on consent, or do we want to bring it back to full council in on regular business? Any thoughts? Before I ask that question, I will ask any other comments, round two. Deputy Council President, round two for you.
Just since we're a small group here tonight, just a personal observation, Christmas time went into Seattle and noticed that there's, they have scooter lanes now dedicated to the scooters, and it was a joyful evening, and there was a whole bunch of teens in the scooter lanes, just having a great time there. So Seattle is obviously wrestling with this micro, you know, management of these, of these micro, what do you call it, micro, yeah, micro-mobility engines, and obviously kind of setting up avenues where those can thrive and not be a mess. And I'm sure it's very expensive, but it might be interesting to just see what Seattle is doing in that context, and possibly Redmond too, because they do have a lot of scooters over there. So anyway, that was just a personal observation. In terms of whether this should be on the consent agenda or not, it's so important, you know, and yet it's also a great big item to ask the whole council to take up. So I'm kind of torn. I guess, what's the, what are the, what's the purpose that we're trying to achieve here? Are we trying to educate the rest of the council, or is it something that they can trust us to have reviewed and, and then just put it on the consent agenda? I guess it would be, what's our outcome that we want?
Councilmember Hall, your thoughts?
I guess I was going to ask staff if they heard any kind of major changes that you think you might go back to the document on, because if not, then I don't think it necessarily needs to live in regular business. I mean, if it is, if the title changes to MAP and, and Vision Zero gets changed, and there's some other things like that, then maybe, but it looks like maybe.
Yeah, my, my thinking is just, was actually reacting to how we reacted to this presentation, which was, you know, lots of nods and very few questions. And so I, I think from an educational perspective, the, the whole council would love to know what we're doing. I just don't know that there's going to be a lot of value provided back from taking the time with the full council. So always happy to provide that additional insights if that helps, but I don't know that there would be much more additional, many additional questions, or kind of any kind of nudging of it. So if it's, if you would like, this is a question to, you know, staff, if you would like to have that extra visibility to give it presentation for the council, I am happy to suggest we put it on regular business. Otherwise, I'm also very happy to just put it on. So where would you like it? The Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Members of the Committee. Good evening. First of all, I want to make sure there's clarity on the name. I don't, I, I thought it was two to one for Mobility Implementation Plan versus Mobility Action Plan. So is that the committee's desire? Because if that's a point of question, then I think you, it goes on regular, just for that, if nothing else. But, but with that said, I also think it's important to put on the regular agenda. Many of your colleagues have been providing me feedback, saying that the council's, you know, not focusing on major issues. And the answer for that is because the committee system's working so well. And so one of the things that I'm going to be trying to do, and the mayor's going to be trying to do during 25, is to encourage some things to go back on regular business, that perhaps we haven't been putting on consent, because your colleagues feel disconnected from the process, they don't always have the time to watch the tapes of these meetings or review the minutes of these meetings. So there's going to be a handful of things that I think we're going to, the administration's going to be a little bit more aggressive in recommending on regular business, and I think this would be one of them. So with that, there's also still the question of the title.
Well, let us, let us talk about MIP versus MAP. I, I put MAP out there. I wasn't certain where you were standing on that, neither of you, so, Councilmember Hall.
I mean, it's catchy. Let me ask a follow-up question, though, and that is, did Mobility Implementation Plan, was that the verbiage that came from the Equity Board, or was the Equity Board's feedback just remove the word master and create a more inclusive title?
That's exactly right, yeah. Just removing the word master is the important part.
Would TAB be offended if we changed it from implementation to action?
I'm sure that would be just fine.
Then that's another vote for MAP, in my opinion.
Yes, and just having heard the idea, you know, five minutes ago, but MAP certainly is catchy, and I do like the, the parallel between the Climate Action Plan and the Mobility Action Plan. So I think there's three votes from MAP.
It's funny, when I was driving over, I was thinking, something other than Implementation Plan, and then I was looking at the presentation, and there it says, actions, 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 and I went, oh, yeah, it's an action. So, sounds like we have support for, at least from this committee, for action, and I think, based on the discussion, we probably have support for regular business when we come back to council. All right, any other questions or any comments, last thoughts? Please.
Sorry, I always come in at the end. So just to clarify then, is the administration supportive and okay with Mobility Action Plan?
You know, as has been discussed, we want to make these plans accessible, and if there is a barrier that's perceived by our staff, as well as the community with the word master, then fine. It's our implementation versus action. I asked Stephen, who's sitting so quietly in the corner there, if he knew of any other MAPs, in MAP acronyms in our world, where there might cause confusion, and he indicated a few moments ago that he didn't know any. I could really throw another wrench in this, and that's the, the Climate Action Plan, of course, is known as the ICAP.
Well, it's funny, I thought about IMAP, and then I thought it sounded like a product from Apple.
Okay, well, then I think, I think MAP it is, as long as there's no conflicting acronyms, and Stephen's the keeper of conflicting acronyms, that, the administration has no, no concern.
All right, I think, I think we're good. You got what you need, and then some?
I did, Chair, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Thomas, appreciate you, two nights in a row. All right, let's, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is COM 0083 Squawk Mountain All right, John, you ready? Oh, let's, let's wait for Councilmember Hall to get back. Here we go. Take it away, thank you.
Good evening, Committee. My name is John Mortensen. I am the Transportation Engineering Manager. With me tonight is our consultant, Partite, we've got Brent Powell, Janessa Donato, and then a familiar face, John Larson-Friend. We're going to be talking about the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project. The purpose of the presentation tonight, and the feedback that we're asking from the committee, is about the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Project, and the direction needed is, does the committee support the exclusion of an uphill bike lane in the preferred alternative for the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project? I'm going to pass it off to John.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is John Larson-Friend. I was once, recently, the Transportation Program Coordinator here at the city. I have since taken a position with Partite as the Senior Transportation Planner. In, in the name of transparency, I was the, the project manager on this project, so it seemed like a natural segue for me to, to join the team. So with that, I'm going to give an overview of projects and a bit of the timeline before handing it off to my colleagues. So first, the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project is a project, as you can see on MAP, the study area is along 2th Avenue Northwest and Mount Olympus Drive Northwest. That's from Mount Markham Place in the south and Furwood Boulevard in the north. So just a real quick walkthrough of the timeline. After hiring Partite as our consultant in early 2023, we went through a Phase One survey and data analysis period. That was a survey that went out to the Squawk Mountain neighborhood, basically find out what they wanted this corridor to be, and we got a lot of great feedback. We took that information and through the fall, developed study alternatives. I think we had five or six, somewhere around there. And then in December, we had a, an internal city workshop. We invited people from all over the city, from different departments, to basically go through all the, the six options and parse it down to two or three. The options, the alternatives that we came up, or we decided were the best to proceed with, they all did not include a landscape strip, which is not compliance with the current city street standards. So we came back, we came to you in April of 2024 and asked for the confirmation that we could basically show the public these two alternatives, which we did. In June, we did a second cycle, a Phase Two of outreach, or sorry, we prepared all of the materials during June, and then we conducted the survey in summer, August, really presented those two options, and we got a lot of great data, a lot of great feedback. Due to those results, the, the results of the survey, basically, it was almost 50/50, I think it was 49/51 for the, for Alternative One and Two. And so we added a, another small piece to the scope of work, which was a cost estimation of two. So then, as staff, we conferred and came up with the preferred alternative that we would recommend to council. We took that recommendation to TAB in December, and TAB concurred with, with our recommendation, great. Which brings us to today. We're here to talk about that bike lane issue, whether it should be included or not. In March, should be returning to talk about the design as a whole, and then hopefully in the spring, we will move forward with council presentation. So just really quickly, the existing conditions of this corridor, so we're, we're starting at the south, moving north. So this is looking north along Mount Olympus, sorry, Mount Olympus, and as you can see, on the right side there, sidewalk stops, and there is no sidewalk through the entire corridor until the red line ends there, and I'll show you that in a second. As you can see, due to these conditions, and many people walk this area, there's no place formally for them to walk, so they usually use the shoulder, which, you know, not that big. This is just north of the intersection with Sunset Way. This goes down the hill and sweeps around, people use this route all the time as well, but as the lack of sidewalk. And then this is down at the bottom of the hill. As you can see, one side, virtually no shoulder, the other side is a pretty decent-sized shoulder, and that would be the area that pedestrians tend to use, as well as the hardy bikers, those number fours, as we call them. And then down at the end, well, not the end, the, the north end of the project area, the sidewalk then picks up on the western side of the corridor. So with that, I will hand it over to Janessa. Thanks.
As John mentioned, my name is Janessa Donato with Partite, the Lead Engineer for the project. And with the next few slides, I will be providing a summary of the alternatives. So after working with John and receiving feedback from their team, we have advanced two alternatives for the corridor. And they are Alternative One, which adds a sidewalk and a bike lane, and Alternative Two, which adds a sidewalk only. Just please note also that, as John mentioned a few minutes ago, that this committee will be considering official changes to the city requirements for planter strips. And at this time, the concepts and metrics shown within this presentation do not include the planter strip in any portion of the corridor. So first alternative, Alternative One, again, this adds a continuous sidewalk and a southbound uphill bike lane along the project corridor. For the bike lane, the existing west-side shoulder is converted to the formal traditional bike lane. And for the sidewalk, in the northern portion of the project, the sidewalk is located on the west side, and in the south end, the sidewalk is on the east side, aligning with and matching into the existing sidewalk locations within the project limits, as John just showed you in, in those pictures. The project also includes a, a new crosswalk just north of Upper Cemetery Road, which will allow people to access both sides. For Alternative Two, this, again, just adds a sidewalk only. It includes the same sidewalk and crossing improvements as Alternative One. However, with the exclusion of the bike lane, the sidewalk replaces the existing west-side shoulder in the north end, and then in the south side, the existing west-side shoulder And then this slide is a very nice perspective view of the intersection of Mount Olympus and Upper Cemetery. You can see, again, on the left side, Alternative One shows the sidewalk on the west, and then the continuous bike lane on the west, and then the proposed crosswalk north of the intersection, and then the sidewalk on the east. And similarly, on the right side, Alternative Two is showing that same sidewalk on the west, same crosswalk, and then the sidewalk on the east. And then you can see there too, the existing shoulder remains as is. And then for this slide, it's just a quick comparison table between both alternatives. Again, the main difference being the no uphill bike lane for Alternative Two. And then kind of in the, the next three rows there, it's a comparison of the level of traffic stress for both pedestrians and bicyclists. The level of traffic stress basically measures the stress that anyone walking, rolling, or biking may feel while, on, on a road segment. or biking may feel while on a road segment or crossing. And for the pedestrian level of traffic stress, we noted, or we gave values of two, since both alternatives have continuous sidewalk. For the bike level of traffic stress in the uphill direction, with a dedicated bike lane, Alternative 1 has a value of two. But for Alternative 2, we're showing a value of four. Should note that the higher number, or a lower number is better. And the value of four is based on engineering judgment of uphill travel without separation from the vehicles. If we had kind of done this analysis by the book, the value would be three, just based on the traffic volume and speeds. But the value of four is essentially just an effect of the very steep slopes that are encountered through the majority of the corridor. And then finishing up the level of traffic stress comparison, we're showing a values of three in both, since neither have a dedicated downhill bike facility. And then the last two-
Just a quick question on the level of traffic stress. A scale of what, one to five, one to four?
Oh, sorry. One to four. One to four.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then finishing up this table here, the last two rows are comparing the driveway or steep driveway impacts and the tree removals. Alternative 1 has a slightly higher impact to steep driveways, a total of 10 compared to eight, so not too much. But where you can see the bigger difference is within the tree removals. Alternative 1 has about 70 more than Alternative 2. And then lastly, Partite did perform planning-level opinions of costs, or sorry, prepare planning-level opinions of costs for both alternatives. And we found that Alternative 1 was about $2.5 million more than Alternative 2. Again, assuming that there's no planter strip in either alternative. And just want to note that these higher costs are due to kind of stormwater needs, detention and treatment. And then with that widened section, needing more tree removals and their mitigation, needing more retaining walls, and also driveway reconstruction areas. And then Partite will update the costs for the upcoming March presentation if planter strips are included in some portions or all of the corridor.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brent Powell.
Hey Brent, before you launch, I have a question, maybe for the city administrator. Where are we at with the new streetscapes? I mean, I know we, or maybe John, we had talked about that and be working those and putting in some criteria for, I'm just curious when that's coming back and where that sits.
Next month.
Okay. Right now. Got it. A minute.
So thanks for having us tonight. I'm the consultant project manager for this evaluation. So I'm going to talk through the results of our most recent survey that we prepared with the community here. You can see we had 290 responses. This survey was targeted in the Squawk Mountain neighborhood. We were quite happy with that number of people responding to the survey. It's a very similar number that we had with the Phase One Outreach Program we had a couple of years ago. We did have a couple of people respond in Chinese. Nobody responded in the Spanish option we provided, and you can see plus a 99% there in the English language. So we were asking folks to evaluate these two alternatives. We shared several of the graphics you've seen here today with the community and asked them to judge it on these five different categories you see here on the screen. These were the study goals that we developed, based in part on the feedback we received during the Phase One program. So providing equitable travel, improving safety, expanding pedestrian access, promoting bicycling, and avoiding impacts. And then we had a couple of additional questions as well, and we'll go through the responses to those two questions in a minute here. To ask folks to evaluate the corridors, we had them do a pretty kind of a Goldilocks scale of evaluation. Was it just right, or too little, or too much in any one of these five areas? So every one of these little dots that you see on the chart represents 1% of the responses, not one individual response, 1%. So with Alternative 1, you can see a cluster in every category in that center column, meaning the just right. So many people definitely believed Alternative 1, which again includes both the sidewalk and a segment of the bike lane, was meeting many of these goals and not doing too much or too little. With any type of survey like this, we would expect to see people on the extreme ends of those spectrums, but we are often looking to see how large that number is right in the center. With Alternative 2, as I switch to it here, you can see the dots changing fairly noticeably. Still large clusters in the center, and that's important to note. However, very, very few people responding that it does too much of anything, and that seemed in alignment to our expectations, as we recognize this is the smaller footprint. It's the alternative that is doing less than Alternative 1. We would expect people to respond, if anything, it's doing too little. And so you see quite a few circles appearing in the too little column, which again was in alignment with what we expected to see, based on the choices we gave the public there.
Deputy Council President?
Yeah, Brent, can we go back to the first one?
Of course.
To our alternative one. So what does, it promotes cycling, which is the one, two, three, fourth one down. And we have a lot of people who said it's too much. What does that mean? That they thought the bike lane was too much of an addition, or what does that mean exactly? And look, there's a lot more too-muches there than there is on the one above, and definitely that there is in for Alternative 2. So can you kind of interpret that for us?
Yes. Our best explanation for that, for that category specifically on cycling, is one of two answers. Number one, they don't feel that it's a worthy investment to expand the footprint of the corridor, to add a bicycle facility. Or potentially, number two explanation would be, they just don't want to promote bicycling activity on a corridor. That's possible. We certainly didn't get any, you know, we didn't ask that question to zero in on the explanation, but I think those are the two most likely reasons we would see. So I'll jump to the next two questions where we gave people a very clear choice, and the answer is either yes or no. And this question was asking, if we pursued Alternative 1 and added that bike lane in the uphill direction of the corridor, would you, as the person responding to the survey, envision using that in terms of how often you'd use the corridor on a bike? Would you increase your activity bicycling on the corridor? We saw 40% of people respond to this yes, which we noted was a fairly high number, considering the topography out there. I think during the TAB presentation, we heard some good feedback that reminded us this is all a theoretical question, right? So it doesn't necessarily mean you would see a 40% spike in use. But I think it's of note that you had many people responding yes to this question. Of course, the majority is still saying no, that it would not personally impact their mode choice on the corridor. And then we alluded to this earlier, but it was a near 50/50 split on preference between Alternative 1 and Alternative 2. We asked the residents to respond which one they preferred out of the two options. An eight-vote difference out of that entire sample size, slightly in favor of Alternative 1. So we have 51% versus 49% there.
Councilmember Hall?
Real quick, just in terms of timelines, so I'm ordering this right. Did we have the cost information for the community when they took this survey, or did that come after?
We calculated the cost afterwards. Yes. We certainly informed the community, and I think it was clear from the images, it's a bigger impact, it's a bigger project, you will see more tree impacts and potential property impacts, but we did not give them any numbers to respond to. So based on this, worked with staff here and developed a recommendation for Alternative 2 to proceed with the corridor, basing this on relatively similar responses between preference for Alternative 1 and 2 from the community. And as you heard, we did that cost estimating exercise that reported quite a bit lower cost for Alternative 2, which was very valuable in that decision-making process. Along with the lower cost, the lower footprint, you do see fewer impacts, you preserve more trees, you likely work with fewer property owner negotiations during construction, less driveway reconstruction, things of that nature. So lowers the complexity of implementation as well as the cost. And as I mentioned, we shared that with TAB just recently here in early December. They heard a very similar presentation to what we're preparing tonight for you all, unanimously agreed with the recommendation for Alternative 2, certainly noting there are benefits from a modal perspective with Alternative 1, but the cost value was a big deciding factor in their, at least oral discussion on the topic. So with that, I'm going to pass it back to John here to bring us home.
Thanks, Brent. So was asked earlier, the timing on the landscape standards and the street standards. We started a conversation with the Transportation Advisory Board on December 4, and it was a very robust conversation, but we did not get through everything. So we're coming back to the TAB to finish that conversation later on this month, so that way, at next month's Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting, we can talk about the landscaping standard. And then after that, in March, this project will return to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee again, and we'll have the design study report and want feedback on the final concept and preferred alternative for the corridor, which then will be taken to council in April, and then included in the update of the capital improvement plan in June. Going back to the question that we need direction, does the committee support the exclusion of an uphill bike lane in the preferred alternative for the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project?
All right. Any questions? Deputy Council President DeMichele?
Well, John, I think in the packet you mentioned, too, that if we had, if this was $2.5 million more, that it would be unlikely that we would actually be able to do the project, because the topography does not lend itself to grants. Is that correct? I think I read that in the packet, and I think that's something that people ought to know about this as well.
Yeah. I think the words that I would choose, and I can't remember the exact words that I had in the packet, are, it would be very difficult to fund, because I believe that this project will be funded by the city of Issaquah, not by external funding partners. And coming up with an additional $2.5 million when the city has lots of other priorities will be challenging.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I've got a short list. That was actually, my first question was why we didn't feel it was competitive for grants, so... I'm not sure I entirely followed it. If you could expand on that a little bit, and then also if you could get into if we already have a sense of how we were going to fund it. I know it's a CIP discussion that we're going to have this year, but was this one of the projects we intended to fund with the Transportation Benefit District tax dollar?
So I answered the first one. Why don't feel like it's a good project for grants? Our grant partners are usually looking for projects around pedestrian generators, whether it's a transit center or a school, a business that's near multifamily where people could walk, or within a regional growth center, like what we have within Central Issaquah. But in a residential suburban neighborhood, they're usually not wanting to fund sidewalk projects. And then as for how to fund it, that's a good question. I think the previous CIP showed that we would incrementally be working on this project, going with the school's own safety fund. I think that would be an option. I think another option, and this is kind of getting ahead of things, but we might actually be able to do it with concurrency, that there's some changes in the state law. We're now, currently, we have a non-motorized program, and we have the motorized part of concurrency, but it sounds like we will be able to combine that into one program, as long as we set a multimodal level of service. So if we have a level of service saying that in a neighborhood, we need to have sidewalk on one side and we don't have it, that could be a way to utilize some of those, especially considering the missing middle housing, where there could be potential for growth in the Squawk Mountain neighborhood. So those are some thoughts that I have about how to come up with the funding. And I guess one other one would be how we did Southeast 43rd Signalization Project, and on the project would be another option.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, this one's just to clarify from some conversation that happened at the Transportation Advisory Board, so it had to do with stormwater utilities. So if the placement of utilities, stormwater in particular, wouldn't be in the same place if we had a bike lane or if we didn't have a bike lane between Alternative 1 and 2, is that correct? Is that what I heard from that? So essentially, there's no, like, an easy way to just add a bike lane in the future? If we wanted to, we would also have to shift.
Correct. Yes. So the stormwater utilities usually follow the curb and gutter of the road, and so if we were to have the bike lane, then the curb and gutter would be moved out by feet. And so if we were to build it first with just the sidewalk, and then in 20 years come back and add the bike lane, we'd have to move a lot of stormwater infrastructure.
Yeah, and that's just assuming we would want to do that in the future, but that still would be the added cost with moving the facility, right? Okay. Can I keep going? So there was a picture, the pictures that you showed of the maps from the south section and the north section of Alternative 1 and 2, oh, keep going. Yeah, these ones. So the, basing north section on the bottom looks, I mean, identical between each alternative, except for there's no, like, clearly marked bike lane in the second one. Am I interpreting that right? That the space is still there, it's just right of way that we're not using as a bike lane? Is that right? Seeing some nods.
That's what it looks like to me.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. I thought the challenge around tree replacement was an interesting point and compelling, too. So that was one of the challenges that was identified with, if we had to move 150 trees as opposed to 90, whatever it was, or was it 70-ish or something, for Alternative 2? Oh, 50, okay. For Alternative 2. All right, you guys kept talking, and now I lost it. Oh, so that's a problem, because there's far more trees that we would have to find somewhere within the sub-area to have replacement. Is that a problem that exists for Alternative 2 as well? I mean, do we have a good sense of where we would put replacement trees anyways?
So it'll be a challenge for both alternatives. It'll be a bigger challenge for Alternative 1 than Alternative 2. But as you mentioned, we will need to replace every tree that we remove within the same Squawk Mountain sub-area. And there's only so many places to put trees on a mountain with a lot of trees.
Yeah, that does sound like a challenge. Okay, so both challenging, one extra challenge.
Yes.
Double challenging, okay. I remember the last time we talked about Squawk Mountain multimodal and bike facilities, I think I had asked a question about, is there value or need to have kind of scattered bike facilities across, like, across the neighborhood? So like, I was envisioning, maybe it's not as likely that members of the community are biking up Squawk or down Squawk, but maybe there are kids who are using the facilities to go from park to home or something like that, and maybe it would be worth looking into having kind of bike lanes up on top of the mountain and not necessarily connected. Is that something we looked into? I'm just curious. Or in your opinion, would that be valuable?
Valuable, yes. I guess the question would be, at what cost? I do think it would be valuable, and I'm thinking of that area on Squawk Mountain where it is fairly flat. And it would be easy to bike down the street to go visit your friend or go to the park. I do think, though, if it were kids biking to their friends, that they'd probably just bike on the sidewalk. That would be my rec- That would be my recommendation. And so, I do see value in it, but that's also a section that's got a lot of really big trees, and we might find that it might involve removing some of those big trees. Of course, I guess that one drawing did show that there would be a shoulder in a lot of it. So, I think as we get into the design, if there's a way economically include a little bit of bike lane in the flat area, it might be good, but it's not something that I would want to really include in the preferred alternative, but maybe have as a little footnote to the design team to look into when we get into design.
Okay, yeah, that was just something I was thinking about. What you just, I have a few more, but what you just said made me think of another question. So, the drawings that show the shoulder, that's not a dedicated bike lane, that's not necessarily showing up in reality, that there will be a full shoulder throughout that whole area, right? Because there'll be some right-of-way intrusions with trees and stuff like that. Sorry.
Because it wouldn't be a formal bike lane, it may at points narrow. You know, we're capturing typical widths along the corridor today, so there may be some sections where it's a four or three-foot wide shoulder, which would be too small for a standard bike lane design. Yeah, and trees may be up against that, vehicles may park in there. One thing we recognize is people may certainly put their trash receptacles out there for collection times. So, that's, and we'd design a system where you'd avoid that. If you put a formal bike lane with alternative one, you'd put some widened areas where folks could put trash cans and things for those days of the week.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Oh, the last question I wrote was about funding, and you already went into that. So, okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
I have one, and it's possibly a difficult one to answer, but do we have any sense of what the current bike traffic is on this stretch of road on Squawk Mountain today?
Don't have a good sense. I'm guessing it's not much, and it's bicyclists who are very dedicated, whether they have really nice e-bikes or very nice road bikes. I would guess there's probably a little bit of a crowd that is dedicated to weekend bike riding and wants to ride up Squawk Mountain so they can ride down it. These are just speculations.
Yeah. No, I'm just, I mean, I think it's, I was really intrigued with the pie chart, the would you ride more if there was a lane graphic? And that's why I was just kind of curious. Every once in a while, so I live in Tallis, which is another very steep slope, and I'm always impressed and amazed at the intrepid bicyclists making up that hill. They're more frequent than I would imagine. So, that's all the question I had for you. Anything else? All right. City City Clerk, anybody online expressing an interest in making public comment?
No attendees online, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience interested in making public comment at this time? No, okay, I'm going to move on. Okay, so we've been asked for some thoughts and direction. I will start. Councilmember Hall, you want to start us off this time?
Throw me in, okay. I will, sure.
Because you are a true.
Thank you for all the work. I'm glad we had the touches that we did with the community too. It was great to hear their feedback, even though some of it was really close, and to ask them about alignment with the goals that were put together, which I thought were well thought out, and then also between the different alternatives. So, I appreciate that. Like I said, I went back and watched TAB, and I appreciate their thoughtful feedback on this as well. Some of the bits of feedback, most prominent feedback that I pulled from that meeting were that perhaps 2.5 million could be put to better use, especially given our budget constraints looking into the future, not necessarily convinced about the return on investment for the bike infrastructure, perhaps not as feasible to bike up and bike down anyways, even though there are these weekend voyeurs, like you say. And I actually did reach out to, it's completely anecdotal and only two, so not statistically valid in any way, but I do have some friends that live on Squawk, and I talked to them, and they see a couple bikers a day perhaps on Squawk, and that those are at different parts of Squawk. So, again, not valid, but I thought the necessarily feasibility argument was good. And then also, there was an argument made towards the end of the meeting that they started talking about, well, how, what's going to make council more likely to actually fund this, pull this into a budget from a CIP, and the lower price tag would be something that could help us actually pull it from a CIP into a budget, which I thought was interesting they were thinking about us in that way. I understand all those arguments. Makes sense to me. It still feels kind of strange, especially because we just re-upped essentially the mobility now action plan that has, you know, specific policies and potential actions around bike infrastructure in particular, trying to get our network up to LTS3 from where Squawk right now is, which is LTS4, which I think is what I read in the memo, and then also just creating bikeable connections between neighborhoods and commercial spaces. And then again, kind of like what I was saying in the last item, in this case, it also puts in conflict those goals with our tree retention goals, and then funding, and also impacts to right-of-way, what people might think of as their driveways and things like that as well. So, I don't know. I mean, if we really had all the flat right-of-way in the world without trees, wouldn't that be great, right? We could really have all the facilities that we want, but we don't. So, it hurts my soul to say this because I love bike infrastructure, and I think we need it all over the city, but perhaps, I think, alternative two without the dedicated bike lane might be the more prudent way to go, especially with our current funding dilemmas where we're at right now. Again, it hurts to say not having a bike lane, but that doesn't necessarily mean as well that people aren't biking. If people are biking and they're already those weekend voyeurs, they're going to continue doing that. We're also going to be empowering pedestrian safety and walkability on Squawk Mountain, which is very good as well. So, those are kind of my initial thoughts is maybe we go with alternative two.
Councilmember, or Deputy President DeMichele?
Thank you. So, first of all, John, nice to have you back in front of us again, so good to see you. This is really a good example of what you were talking about. We've got conflicting policies, and we have to now, you know, was it Solomon that had to decide about the baby? So, now we have to decide, make the hard decision about how we go ahead. I think the deciding factor for me is the cost, because it sounds to me like if we included a bike lane, we're actually not going to get this project at all. So, or it would be really, really difficult. And this is an area that really has needed some work for a long time. So, that is the first item. And the second one is the tree removals, because you think of 120 trees going down, and we just lost a bunch of trees during this bomb cyclone. And I could feel the gaps out there. You drive up and down, and you know where trees used to be, and now there's just wide open space, and it really, really does change the character of the community. So, to think that due to a bike lane, we'd have to take 120 trees down really is difficult for me. So, alternative two makes sense to me for that and the other reasons that you brought forward, and I would support that. And I agree that we need more bike lanes, but perhaps we just can't do it in this particular area with this kind of a slope. And also, I guess I have some concerns about, I've heard from people living up there that people are speeding, you know, they speed down that street, and especially since the pandemic, they're worried, the concerns about safety on that road have really increased. So, I think for all of those reasons, alternative two makes more sense. So, yes, I would support that.
Councilmember Hall, you could not have teed up this discussion better with your questions and comments on the previous agenda item, because this is a classic example of absolute policy decisions in direct conflict with each other. And I think, quite honestly, I think as the information was presented, it's actually fairly clear, as much as it is difficult to say no to a bike lane, because biking is one of our core tenets, the overriding data kind of points in the other direction. So, I'm, you know, I think that in this instance, it makes perfect sense to go without the bike lane, given all of the other factors. And I think the other thing is I agree with the Deputy Council President. I'm not sure this gets funded at $2.5 million more, you know? And so, something is better than nothing, and then we're moving the needle in terms of multimodal, non-motorized transport. So, I am completely supportive of that, just as a comment. John, great to see you again, and thank you, because always fun to have that continuity. So, thrilled to see where you've landed. And then we are looking forward to seeing, I think, you all again next month to talk about landscaping standards in the February meeting. Right. Yeah, right. Did you get what you needed, John? We are, okay, that's a thumbs up, so if we're good on that, then I will move to our last thing. Do we have a, I'm not sure if we have a good of the order, but any comments? Announcements? Announcements? It is announcements? No? All right. I don't see any announcements. So, with that, this meeting is adjourned at 7:51.